Motion supposed to come out of recess.
You have that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
And I think we're five fifty-nine, but one minute away from our regular monthly meeting, so it's safe to go ahead and close this meeting.
Okay. This time I entertain a motion to close our budget meeting.
I have motion.
Second.
All in favor?
So we're out of session for about ten seconds.
Ten seconds. Good evening, everybody. At this time, I'll call the order, we'll call the order for our regular scheduled meeting at six o'clock, and glad to see everybody, and we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Watney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, good evening, Board, and I'd like to welcome everybody who's here with us, the Fannin County Board of Education office, as well as those folks who are watching us online on Rebel TV. Good evening to you as well. I'd like to just make note that one of our board members, Mr. Bramlett, is unable to be with us this evening. He had a procedure, he's doing well, I talked to him a little bit before the meeting today, and so I expect he's probably either watching us online, or will be watching it a little bit later on. So, Mr. Chair, our first item of business is the invocation, and so for that, I'm going to call our Lieutenant Darden Couch from the Fannin County Sheriff's Office, he's our lead SRO. If he'll come up to the front and open the meeting for our invocation, you need Lieutenant. Everybody, please stand.
Let's pray. I kind of love the people who follow what we continue once again today, Lord, we thank you for your state, it's you giving us hope, thank you for watching over us throughout this day. Lord, ask that you go with our board members, always like make decisions for our school system, be with our superintendent, Lord, he makes the same decisions, Lord, just lean God and direct, why he'd say that. What we pray for, our nation, yes, that you lean God and direct our leaders, what we pray for our county, for each and every one that makes up our little county that loves our dear. Lord, we ask again, just watch over us throughout this day, go with us, be with us, watch over our students, our parents, as being here where we start another year, just watch over us for good health, good ways that we can best teach our students, talk and share with our parents the things that they desire. Lord, we thank you for it all, and we wish my beloved name will pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. And our next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. For that, I'm going to invite Executive Director of Fannin County, Governor Belton, Kristi Gribble, she'll come to the front, lead us in the pledge. Kristi.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay. Mr. Chair, our next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and that's comprised of two parts. The first is to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting, and the second is to approve the minutes from past meetings. Let's go ahead and open up that first set, Mr. Enslie. And we'll scroll through, what he has up here is the six PM regular call meeting on June tenth, 2021. Go through those minutes, please, Mr. Enslie. Okay, thank you, sir. One more set, and this will be for the call meeting, same date, at five thirty PM. Thank you. Mr. Chair, recommend approve the items on the Consent Agenda as presented.
Chair, have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So Lou?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, number five, is Economic Development Partnership Designation. We have a press release from the Georgia Department of Education, and this is something that Mr. Ruth is going to talk about, and also invite Ms. Gribble to the front. Mr. Ruth, floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Watney. Thank you, Board of Education. The, as the press release states, the Georgia DOE recently accepted our school system into the 2021-2022 Economic Development Partnership Initiative. Very few school systems were accepted into this initiative. This acceptance is a testament to our school system's continued commitment to working with our local business and industry. We will strive over the next school year to obtain the official Economic Development Partnership Award through the Georgia Department of Education. The main person who helped us get this far with this initiative is here with us tonight, as Dr. Watney mentioned, Ms. Kristi Gribble. She's the Fannin County Development Authority Executive Director, and on our, on behalf of our school system, Ms. Gribble, we want to say thank you for your dedication to helping our school system bridge the gap between education and the workforce. We are excited about working with you and the Fannin County Development Authority on this exciting new initiative over the next school year, and we hope to be here next year at this time, holding up a trophy. So, thank you, and we're excited about it. Again, thank you.
And I just want to say thank you, Lucas, he's probably going to run every time, any time I ever ask him to do anything again, because his application was tedious, but it can be really great for both economic development and Fannin County school system with exposure to Georgia's Department of Education. So I'm really excited, and we, if we get accepted, we might get some money to cross-train, and so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, with you two at the, at the helm on this, I look for acceptance on this, and I think we're going to get it, and this is just one more example of how the good things in this, this school system happen for our kids through partnerships with the real world. And so, we're so thankful to have those partnerships, we're thankful for all that you do for us as part of economic development, not only with this initiative, but all the rest of it. In fact, you serve on our board, and so there's, there's relevant, meaningful communication. As I'm quoted up there saying, "We don't operate in isolation, we're a part of the community, and our work is an investment in the future of this community." Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Congratulations, Ms. Gribble. The next one's our district health update, so there's no action needed on number five. Applications we made, we've been accepted, so next, as we watch the process unfold through the course of the year, and we'll, we'll come back next year on that, as Lucas said. All right, number six, district health update, Mr. Ruth.
All right, and here we are with the district health update. Mr. Enslie, thank you, here, he's going to present the, the graph that we have continued to present over the past several months. We do have five new cases yesterday. The two-week average when it comes to COVID-19 cases in Fannin County Gilroy Union is about one per day, so it's, it's, it's consistent, consistently low. Reaching out to Fannin Regional Hospital, they are currently running their normal average daily census, similar to the way it was before the pandemic, when it comes to available beds, surgeries, the emergency department, so on and so forth. So the hospital is in a good place right now. And so, with that said, and I'm going to preface everything that I'm about to say by saying that everything could change on a dime based on future local COVID-19 numbers. However, due to our recent and current local COVID-19 numbers, and Governor Kemp ending the public health state of emergency in response to COVID-19 on Thursday, July first, we are excited to say that we are planning to start our 2021-2022 school year in Fannin County as normally as we possibly can. Our goal is to get back to offering most, if not all, of the dynamic learning and parent engagement opportunities that we offered prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. Face masks will be optional for students and employees, however, we are still awaiting further guidance when it comes to face mask usage on school buses. Contact tracing is still yet to be determined, and, but I do want to remind everyone that, again, we don't, we don't push this either way, pro or con, but remember that COVID-19 vaccinations are possible for anyone twelve and older, and are offered at our local health department, and that being fully vaccinated does exempt a person from the contact tracing and quarantining process that, that still exists right now, today. So I do want to mention that, and Mr. Enslie is showing that, that press release from the, from the Department of Public Health about the vaccinations.
Okay. Good job, Mr. Ruth. Board, are there any questions?
I'm glad we're going back.
Yes, sir, me too. We're certainly in a better place than we were a year ago. Thank you for that. Okay, Mr. Ruth, thank you so much. Item number seven, central office update, I have two items on here for you, and one is just the, and it's the district leadership duties, and you can, they're posted on the webpage, they're also just put here for archive purposes, for record. This is the district leadership member team, this is a ten-person team, that's the district leadership, plus we have five principals. And Board, I'll just say how proud I am of, of this group of leadership, district leadership and principals. They're so strong, they're quality people, and they love kids and people, and I'm thankful for that, thankful for them. So I want to give a huge shout out to them, and then I'll give a shout out to our technology department, they've also updated the district website with this, so folks can, if you don't explore our website or look through it, we happen to have our webmaster run a tech support over here with us this week, and Marianne Walker does a fantastic job with the website, give you a shout out on that. And so this information's posted there. And then the last thing that's available for the public, Mr. Enslie, I'll turn it over to you for that one, some good news.
Good afternoon, Board, we're excited to have a, a regular open house this year. We have got our dates at this school out there, news media. Basically, we have open house, the standard open house, on July the twenty-third, from one o'clock to five o'clock. This will be for all of our elementary schools and our middle schools, and the high school for upperclassmen ten through twelve. The high school does have a separate open house for incoming freshmen, and that will be on July the twenty-eighth, at five o'clock to seven o'clock. Just a couple of things that are on the sheet, about parking passes, if you have someone that's going to be driving to the high school, there will be a lottery on July the twentieth for seniors, and July the twenty-first for juniors and sophomores at ten AM. Of course, our first day of school is July the thirtieth, and we are excited about getting those kids back in the building. Our custodians, our maintenance department, our bus technicians, everybody's getting ready for our kids, and the principals have been interviewing, recommending to you guys for approval, a lot of people, and we're excited about getting all the kids back in the building. But if you are going to be enrolling a child, just some tips here about what makes it a little easier, some of the documentation that you'll need, and if you have any questions about bus transportation, you can contact the bus garage and say eight oh two, this is their two number. But again, we look forward to working with your child this year.
Thank you, Mr. Enslie. Any questions on this information?
The past year, the situation, the way it's been, has really brought to the forefront. People used to talk about the curriculum and learning, for instance, was the only thing of importance, but this epidemic has brought to the forefront so many other values in being in school.
Yes, sir.
Clubs, learn to deal with people, so, just on and on.
Versus someone, for instance, at home schools, they lose so much, or used to, I think it's
approved, that this past year has really, really brought that to, to be obvious.
Any other comments? Mr. Chair, we'll take us then to number eight, which is Code of Conduct, and for that, I'm going to ask Ms. Miller to come up to the front. Board, no action is needed on this, I'll let Ms. Miller explain further. Good evening.
Good evening. As Dr. Watney said, there's no action needed on this item, this is for information purposes only. We, this is our student code of conduct, all five schools operate under this code of conduct. No changes have been made since the revisions of, that were made last June that you all voted on and approved, and all of this information is shared with their schools' SGTs, either through the overall handbook process or as a student code of conduct, and so no recommendations for changes at this time have been made for the student code of conduct, and this will be our code for this coming school year.
Okay, so it's just placed here as, as basically an archive, it's the same as what was approved last summer by you, and the SGT is repeated over the course of last year, and they have no recommendations for the five SGTs I reviewed, and so. Any questions? Mr. Chair?
I did.
All right. Takes us then to number nine, public comment, Mr. Danner. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
We've got to sign that for public comment, Bill, or William Fleming? Okay, and then the next item is Mr. Greg Martin, if he wants to speak on critical race theory.
Okay, Greg Martin?
Number one's not here, number two steps up.
All right, good evening, Greg.
How are you?
Good, and you have a timer? You have Mr. Enslie, you ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. All right, sir, floor is yours.
Yeah, I sell real estate, I've been here about eighteen years, have a son in the high school, which my son says, "Thank you for Mr. Ramsey, so we appreciate that."
Maybe we should pause for just one second, Mr. Enslie, so five-minute time with one public comment, we'll give you up to five minutes. I won't count this time against you when we were said.
I won't, you said.
Anyway, five-minute time. All right, I apologize for that, sir, floor is yours.
Anyway, being here for about eighteen years, have a son in the high school, we've all heard on, on the media, the news about critical race theory, and, you know, some people are pro for, some are against it, it's a political tool, in my opinion, that's my personal opinion. I would like to know, and a lot of other parents that I know would like to know, and a lot of the people moving to the area from cities and stuff, trying to get away from that, would like to know where the board stands on that. Is it going to be taught in the school as curriculum, or is it not? That's my only question. So I just want to kind of know where everybody stands on it. That's it.
Didn't have to reset him?
Exactly.
Okay.
It's simple.
Well, the, it is the policy of this board, we do not respond to public comment or engage public comment, but we will certainly follow up with you about your question, and we appreciate you coming in, speaking with us. I will say that Mr. Danner might have had some information related.
Yeah, I got it, yeah, I'm the governor.
Yeah, this Board of Education teaches the Georgia standards of excellence, and our this school system knows to our kids, and I think the governor made that position very clear, and the information that Mr. Danner shared with you.
Okay.
We'll certainly follow back up with you. All right, that's it on that agenda. And the next one is facilities update, Mr. Danner?
Yeah, several pictures here, we talked about them last month, I'll just let Robert, Mr. Enslie scrolled through there, that's the data room there, Blue Ridge Elementary, used to look like camouflage, so we've got it painted there professionally. This is that, only one picture of Blue Ridge Elementary, but every year we have our rugs and carpet cleaned, so again, this is just Blue Ridge Elementary, so you can imagine how many pieces of the carpet rugs it gets cleaned every year. The lube at Blue Ridge has been installed, ready to go for training. Had the basement repainted at Blue Ridge Elementary, they're actually doing the back hall as we speak, hopefully be finished on Monday. Far right window, that's the, the new windows that has been installed there at, at East Fannin, they've also had the, the tinting on it, the film on it, safety film, so all that's been done there at East. Also, I have thirteen classrooms painted at East, so don't look at the floors there, here's the lube, the screen, again, all that's at East. East also got the lube, so again, that's, that's been, this is one of the classrooms at East, there's a before picture, there's an after picture, I think there was four of them, Mr. Price, we had removed per their request, so give them some more space there at East. West Fannin, we had four of the gang bathroom floors redone, so there's a before picture, and there's an after picture, the epoxy floor, all ideas on cleaning, and custodians were very appreciative. This is the basketball court there at West, that's a before picture and an after picture. So I had the cracks, the gentleman that we had come in to do that, he said, "I'll do the best I can on the cracks, some of those cracks, you can stick your fist down in," so, so again, got that resurfaced. All right, Mr. Enslie, I want you to stop right here. Several, several, several months ago, we get a, get a crazy email from Walmart, Walmart wants to know, this is back in February, do we want some free hand sanitizer? Absolutely, I'm going to try for it. We got it, fifty-three foot semi, twenty-six pallets, one hundred and forty-four thousand and a hundred and forty-four three-ounce bottles of hand sanitizer. Maintenance men about quit homeless, because the loading dock, we could not load it off, so we had to go get the tractor to get it off the truck, so we got it here, and they said, "Will we take it, will we take this to the shop?" I said, "Nope, we're going right to the schools." So the custodians are still mad at you on this, so we've got hand sanitizer galore, thank you to Walmart.
Yes, thank you to Walmart and the parents that are listening out there, don't buy the hand sanitizer, we've got it for you at the school.
Three ounces, one hundred and forty-four thousand bottles of hand sanitizer. Go ahead. Here's that's middle school, that's the baseball field to the left, that's the entrance down to the, I'm not even sure what road that is, but we had a complaint there at the middle school during parent pickup, that people who live down in there cannot get out. So we just done a, go ahead, Mr. Enslie, we just done a do-not-block, sort of marked it off, this is through Deputy Walden, and he said the very next day, he said that, the people called Anthony, because Anthony wanted to call and said, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." And, and it actually did work, people don't really, while they're waiting in line, they don't block their driveway, so again, that's just a little bit of trying to be a good neighbor. Here's all to the middle school, this is the, now the bus side over on the left-hand, so we got, we had some concrete poured, that's been, you know, we flipped that parent pickup, so we had to do that another side also. So again, that's been completed. This is in the engineering room, as you can see, the floor, that's where some humongous tables, I don't even know how long they've been there, probably since the school was built, but Mr. Young requested we get that out of there, slightly robotics, and actually I went by there this week, the floor looks absolutely amazing, Benny done a great job on it. This is in one of the, Mark, where do you call this room?
This is the podcast room.
The podcast room, so the next picture is what this room looked like next to, I mean, it had shelves and everything in there, so we got it, we got it demoed, had Matt go in, do electricals per their request. Here's that high school CTA building that you've, you approved last year, this is what we're going to get cops money on, so again, the actual units come in yesterday, so hopefully there will be, if you go up there now, it still looks like this, so don't go to CTA building right now, so we've got a couple weeks to get that completed. Here's also the high school, Dr. Ramsey had made this request, and go right within the next picture there, Robert. Here's all of our state championship signs, so Dr. Ramsey told me today that nineteen ninety-three people who played on that basketball team are coming up, getting their picture made beside these signs, so again, that's a great visual to the high school, and so again, notice there's only four signs as of right now, only four, but hopefully there'll be more in the future. So a lot of things going on facilities, and I can't keep up with it there.
Before you, before you come away from facilities too, the principals are here to probably back this up, but give a huge shout out to the student summer workers that were hired by the board last month, they've been working hard and really helping with the, with the processes that they're doing this summer.
Absolutely, with those nine students that we, that you approved to hire, the custodians, they just can't tell you how appreciative they are, and they've already asked, "Are we going to do this next summer?" And I said, "Hopefully we will," so again, we're going to do a little bit.
I'm seeing some heads nod from the principals, I think.
We're, we're going to do a different process, let, make kids apply for it, you know, we're going to check grades, we're going to check the discipline, we're going to check everything, and it actually probably can get some recommendations from teachers as well, you know, hey, this is a big person, this is not a big person.
So that, that all came together very quickly, and I appreciate your help making that happen, as the board's approval on that.
Let's go. While we're on facilities too, actually, I looked at four left, recorded work orders completed, recorded one thousand seven hundred and twenty of our max part, so that was from July one to June the thirtieth of this school year, last school year, so again, work orders are through the rest, and so again, I'll give a shout out to the max part as well.
Okay, thank you. Construction?
Construction update, again, I cannot keep updating. This is one of a meeting we had with our access control engineers and that sort of thing there, that's in the little trailer out there, and then again, just several pictures, that's a bus, a bus on the left, a staff foot will sit around the right, rough end, all that stuff, but the center, the actual concrete has been poured, the slab's been poured, I was actually happened to be there when they brought that in, that's pretty good, I want to bring that in. If you've not been by the, the property out there, I hate changes on a negative basis. They, they had received it Tuesday, good little rain last night, went by this morning, we'll have grass on it very quickly, and I started digging footers for this, for the transportation this week, and actually, Denver told me just a second ago, said possibly the underground storage tanks will be delivered first of all, of course, there's still a lot of dirt, it's going to be, very excited.
Yeah, that's great. Any questions or feedback on that? Mr. Danner needs an approval, number twelve, purchase West Fannin Elementary School window project.
Well, this is just to, to approval, to actually send this out to bid, we, we got all the windows replaced at East, and it did not mean a, a dollar amount of pressure to have to put it out to bid, so we got one quote from a company, going to be over a hundred thousand dollars, so again, I'm, I'm asking provision just to put this out to bid, to get this done either during Thanksgiving, Christmas, or definitely by next summer. This will be paid for out of sploshes.
Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion? Lou? You have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
It'll probably be the September board meeting when we'll come back to the, see what you get.
Thank you, Mr. Danner, appreciate those updates and information. Next up is the district financials, and we'll invite Ms. Wynn back up to the podium.
Okay, so today we have our May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one general fund at ninety-one point six-six percent, complete for the fiscal year. Our local revenue was at one oh six point eight-three versus one oh two point two-eight from the prior year. Total revenues was at one oh two point thirty-one percent versus ninety-seven point seven-three percent for the prior year. Our total expenditures are at eighty-one point twenty-one percent versus eighty-five point twenty-nine percent for the prior year.
So health and financial report, Mr. Chair, recommend approval.
Chair, have a motion to approve the financials. Have that motion as presented. I'll second you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Next up is the splosh collection update, Ms. Wynn?
So our splosh, we received one thousand sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents in catch-up money, which comes in twice a year, and we received seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-six cents for our splosh collection for the month of May, so that brings us with receiving one point four-six-seven million since we started our new splosh collection in two months, which is twenty-three point six percent more than what we had received in the prior year at that time.
Congress, Ray Strong in Fannin County, we're playing.
That is fantastic.
Okay, no approvals needed, so we'll move on to the spending resolution, which does require approval, Ms. Wynn?
Yes, sir. This is our spending resolution, where is the Fannin County Board of Education, where it's sufficient reasons unable to adopt a budget for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty-one, ending June thirty twenty-two twenty-two, where is the public's best served by authorizing the superintendent to continue to expend funds, to continue operations, now therefore be it resolved, the Fannin County Board of Education, that the superintendent may expend funds for all funds for the month of August twenty twenty-one not to exceed one twelfth, final amended budget for all funds for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-one, plus debt service and capital expenditures, don't be due in July, and we do plan on adopting our budget towards the end of August.
Recommend approval of this as presented, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have a motion for the spending resolution for August? You do have that motion. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. Amended budgets for twenty-one.
This is our general fund amended budget, we have our original budget, then our, all of our amendments for our final budget, so you can see in revenues, you've got all the Q E adjustments where they gave us back money, we have all the changes for CTA budgets where we receive more money, or they took away a little bit of money, so that lists every single program that we have revenue for in general fund, so that made our revenue increase seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand four seventy-eight for this FY twenty-one, and then in our amendments for our expenditures, and we have the thirty-seven point three seven five, we did not need to transfer anything to splosh this year, so I decreased that transfer out, and so really, that's the only reduction in the expenditures, and then the other is just changing around the twin functions, what we needed to. And that's the general fund, so then we can continue with special revenues. So special revenues, as you can see, you have all the fund numbers and all the program numbers, and these are all federal funds, so you can see what we had in the beginning, you can then see it, when you get down to cares, and you have a lot of cares, we have a lot of directors who've had a lot of budgets and filing those with the state, and so we've been doing a lot of work with those, but that's all the cares budgets, and then our school nutrition and free cake, so that's, if you keep scrolling, that's the adjustments, and then that's the expenditures for those programs as well.
Give a special shout out to Ms. Regden over there, I saw her looking at this, she has.
Community cares budgets, that the directors have had a lot of work.
Yes, but I will. Yes. But I will say the smart use of those funds has allowed us to be in a position, it's helped us be in the position that we're in right now as well. So it's helped us, definitely.
So here, if you go back up to the top a little bit, this, as, as last year, I presented you with a splosh. So our original splosh budget, our amendment, our final amendment for FY21. And then I'm actually giving you our actual revenue as of the time that I prepared this report. So it's not for the whole year, but it's through May. So we have our amendments for our revenue, the increase in our splosh revenues. We had budgeted 6.58, and actually 7.95 is what we were at the time that I had adjusted this. And then we can go down and see the just adjustments that we needed to make in between those funds. You do have transfers in and transfers out, which that is strictly just, everything goes in Fund 375, and you've got to move it around to all the other 400 funds.
Is that, is that different since we're charter school now, since there's five separate individual school?
No, sir. Under the splosh, you can have as many capital project funds as you want to kind of keep each funds separate. Like we have one for the staff development, we have one for that, we have one that's by 325 that may take smaller projects at different schools. So that's really, you just separate them out to keep the whole project, because when you finish that project, you're going to capitalize the entire amount of money because there's a building.
All right. But did you get, I think, yeah, that's the bottom.
That's it.
All right. Mr. Chair, recommend approval of the FY21 amended budgets as presented.
Can the Chair have a motion for the FY21 amended budget?
So move.
Any more discussion? All in favor.
Thank you. Okay. Now as a follow up to what was presented at 5:30, this is when Ms. Wynn will ask for approval on that documents. Ms. Wynn?
Yes, sir. This is our proposed FY22 budget for general fund, capital projects, and special revenues. This will be what we will advertise in the newspaper with the exception that we're going to have to coordinate with the county and see what date that we will need to have our call meeting, and then get back with the board to see what, and that will be at the bottom, that this budget, our revision of this budget, will be adopted at the board of ed at this call meeting at this time. And we will have that to run hopefully next Wednesday's newspaper.
Does it have to run for?
Just once.
Just one.
Ms. Doss, do you have any updates on that, timing of that, or we still need to come back to that tomorrow morning?
Unfortunately, I do not. I think it will be, we're looking at this third or fourth weekend.
Okay. So board wants Ms. Doss gets us, gets us some information tomorrow, and I will come back to you, and we'll confirm a special call meeting. You said third or fourth week in August?
Yes, sir.
So then we can plan our meeting, and the county will have their meeting accordingly. And Ms. Doss will assist us with the transition of information. So, so we do need action on this proposed budget.
To bring it and advertise it.
So that it can be advertised. So Mr. Chair, recommend approve the FY22 tentative budget for advertisement.
Chair, have a motion as presented.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor.
Okay. Thank you. And wow, awesome, Ms. Wynn. That's, that's great. Okay, number 18, approved purchase of school resource officer vehicles, fast transportation director, David Foster. Oh, good evening, Mr. Foster.
Good evening, Dr. Rock, and good evening, board. Come to you with a request to purchase some Ford Explorer for our resource officers. Badly needed, they've been needed for quite some time. And we just kind of patch up what we've had. So I think it'll be a wonderful thing to put our officers in new vehicles. The sheriff himself has requested this as well. So in order to keep good relations with the sheriff and officer safety, certainly is coming to a law enforcement background with my daughter in law enforcement. I certainly appreciate keeping officers safe. And so that's what we want to do. We've looked at the pricing on these vehicles, and through the power of state contract, we were able to save some money and use a random motor company out of Unidella, which is the dealership that most law enforcement agencies buy from, including our local sheriff. So they were able to hold some cars for us, so we don't have to wait. That's fortunate right now with the chip shortage. It is. Affecting some of these vehicles. Absolutely. So we've got the recommendation here for, to purchase three of them at $33,300 each. These are the police Explorer all-wheel-drive vehicles, so the.
All-wheel drive.
The one in the snow.
Have they had that passed? Have they had that passed?
We have not. The sheriff's department has some, but we have not.
Yeah. Our agreement with them is that we are responsible for three of the cars, and the sheriff is responsible for the other two SRO vehicles.
That, exactly. And.
Two of those are all-wheel-drive, aren't they, LT?
Yeah, plenty of them.
Yeah. So the ones the sheriff covers are, and ours will be after this action right here, sir.
Letter and everything, kind of be the same as the sheriff's?
Yes.
Yes, sir. These will be marked cars that will look just like what's in the regular sheriff's department. So be good and visible throughout campuses, which will also create presence of safety. So.
So 33,3 times 3, 99.9. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to make that motion. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Good job. All right. Number 19, Ms. Williams, good evening.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Good.
Good to meet you.
Got adult meal prices that need approval?
We do. Every year, we're required by the government to make sure that our meal prices are in line. And we are not allowed to subsidize adult meal prices with what we received in our subsidies. And so in checking with the overall costs of meals for Fannin County school system, we will need to increase our adult prices from 450 to 455 next school year, so that we are in compliance with our requirement. Not like.
How about that?
By five cents.
If anybody's been through a drive-through lately, meal prices have increased way more than five cents out there.
They have. I'm very grateful it's only five cents right now.
So, and that's, and that's a five cent increase on, on a good meal. I mean, y'all come in at least a couple of times a year and dine in the cafeterias.
Yep.
This is understandable. Ms. Wynn, I know you have an abundance of support and documentation.
I do.
And we, we understand the request. Mr. Chair, recommendation?
Can Chair have a motion for that request?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Good job, Ms. Wynn. All right. Item number 20, we have policy that is amended that has been on the table for the past month?
That is correct.
Okay.
Good evening, board. Tonight, I come to you with two proposed policies, the first of which is IDE3, which is competitive interscholastic activities for grade 6 through 12. The change in this particular policy is coming to us through a change in state law, which was SB42, the Dexter Mansfield Act, which did become law in Georgia on July 1st. The provisions of this law do allow for homeschool students to come and enroll in our school for at least one class during the day, and then participate in an extracurricular such as a sport or another club, things like that. There are several things that have to happen for the student to be able to participate. One is a written notice, which goes to the principal of the school, also the superintendent, superintendent of the school at least 30 days before the first day of the semester in which the student intends to enroll. Also, a copy of homeschool student's most recent annual progress report from their homeschool instructor. Also, that they are currently passing all of their grade, all of the courses they're enrolled in. And also, the student must meet the requirements for the participation in the specific activity. So this policy has, of course, been on the table since last month. We've received no feedback from the public regarding it. And so tonight, I ask for you to consider passing, to approve this policy, and so that we're in compliance with state law.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Regan. Mr. Chair, approve, recommend approval of the amendment IDE3 as presented.
Chair, have that motion?
You have that motion.
I'll second. Any discussion?
How many students does this include typically?
You know, we, since we no longer manage homeschool students, that's something that a parent, if they choose to homeschool their student, they elect, they, they notify the Department of Education, and this office is not notified of that. So we actually have no idea. But interestingly, we did actually have a parent come in today and speak to us about the possibility of their child participating. And so if any parents are listening currently and wondering how we would implement this, if it does become policy tonight, tomorrow morning, there will be a form that will go live on the high school, middle school, and the board of, the Fannin County School System website, so that they can notify us of their intent to participate in this particular law, so that we can go ahead and begin making plans to welcome their student into our school system. Because the student does have to enroll with us. It is only the one course that they must be enrolled in. But we're ready to get the ball rolling as soon as we have a, a policy in place.
Any more discussion?
All in favor?
There you go.
Okay, fantastic.
Okay, now we have a new policy that's been on the table.
We absolutely do. This one also is coming to us today from a change in state law, which went into effect on July 1st. This one was, or is, policy GARHB, which is about paid parental leave. So Governor Kemp signed this into law back in early May, and it goes into effect, or went into effect on July 1st. We did not have this policy because, of course, we've never had paid parental leave before. This is coming to us from state law. And so this policy is to get us in compliance with it. There's also a form here that will be available once a policy is in place, so that parents who are employees who would like to avail themselves and who meet the eligibility guidelines, which are extremely stringent and extremely specific, that they will be able to do so as soon as this policy is in place. This policy has been on the table since last board meeting. We have not received any public input regarding the policy.
Okay. So like the revision, this new policy is eligible to become policy based on your vote. I recommend approving the amendment GARHB. I'll make sure I got that correct, as presented.
Chair, have that motion as presented.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Regan. Mr. Chair, our next item is personnel, and I defer to you as to whether there's a need for executive session.
No need.
I'm good.
You're good.
We're good, sir. All right. Thank you, sir. So let's take personnel action.
Let's go. Technically, they'll be here.
Okay.
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah.
Ready? Okay. Personnel sheet dated 7/8/21. We have one recension, and that is Alexa Kiefer, effective date 6/17/21. Make that recommendations, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
All right. Thank you. We have recommendations, and each of these recommendations in all categories are pending completion of paperwork and background check. We have four teacher recommendations that are effective for the 21-22 school year, and I'll take these collectively. Mr. Chair, Roxanne Flowers, Jennifer Lester, Sherman Ray, and Johnny Rich, teachers, effective next school year. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion?
So move.
You have a second. All in favor?
Okay. Thank you. Recommendations for paraprofessional, effective 21-22 school year. Take these collectively. Savannah Ash, Megan Bailey, Barbara Foley, Jennifer Hooper, and Trudy Smith. Make that recommendation together, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion? You do have that motion. I'll second. All in favor?
Thank you. Deborah Thomas, school nutrition. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion? So move. Second. All in favor?
Jeffrey Thomas, transportation. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Jeffrey Thomas, transportation. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Shannon York as an administrator, effective 21-22 school year. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Vanessa Weaver as an interim administrator, up to 49% for up to three months full-time as needed pending approval. So make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
All right. Betsy Hyatt was approved previously at 49%. We're going to change that. Interim administrator up to 49% as needed. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion? So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Great. And we have two custodian recommendations that we'll take together, Melissa Barker and Michael Hooper. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
I'll make that recommendation. Make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you. Okay. All right. We have recommendations for substitute teachers, again, pending completion of paperwork, background check, and required training. We'll take these three together. Substitute teachers, Dr. Anna Bradley, Susan Michelle Lynn, and Angie Young. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Recommendation for substitute nutrition, again, pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training. Jennifer Davis. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion? So move. I'll second. All in favor?
Recommendation to substitute administrators, again, pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training. Dr. Anna Bradley and Kelly Manikowski. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
And recommendation for substitute mechanic for transportation department, pending completion of paperwork and background check. Whit Millholland. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion?
So move.
I'll second. All in favor?
All right. Great. Good. All right. Good job, Ms. Wynn. We're moving quick. All right. That takes us then to 23 superintendent's comments, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everybody for coming out and watching us on Rebel TV. I also want to thank you for putting comment this evening. From the 5:30 portion of our meeting, I just want to do a huge shout out to Susan Wynn. Susan, thank you for your leadership over this abundance of work that was not only needing to close out the past year, but to prepare us for the recommendations for the upcoming years. Thank you. I'd also like to thank you, because, you know, you took on my request, which was also shared by the board to restructure those classified pay skills. That was huge. So on behalf of the board, we thank you for that. Now from the six o'clock meeting, Lieutenant Couch, also Ms. Regan, well, thank you for opening our meeting up. And Lucas, you and Christie, your collaboration to enter us into this designation with the Department of Education is just one more example of the many awesome things that are happening for relevant, meaningful learning opportunities for our kids that benefit the kids in school. And so thanks. And I introduce the, the updates to the district leadership, y'all. And I just want to take, again, another opportunity to give a shout out to this district leadership team, including our five principals who are here with us tonight, as well as our district leaders who are here, for everything that they're doing to prepare us for this upcoming year. This is an amazing group of leaders. I'm proud of them. All of us are looking forward to as normal as a school year as, as possible. And it is the goal of this leadership team to do everything that we can for that to occur within the circumstances that we're in. We are certainly, as I said earlier, in a better place than we were a year ago. And that's, that's not only as a school district, but as a community, as a state. We're blessed. I'm fighting. Turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
I'll go first.
All right.
I'd like to thank everybody that's here. I appreciate all of our five principals being here. I know that it's not required, but I thank you for taking your time out to be here. That shows your dedication to your school, to me. For Ms. Wynn, excellent job. And everybody, please tell everybody that helps you, that I personally appreciate all the work that went into that. And if I was going to take a gander, I'd say that all of our employees appreciate that. That's what it's all about, taking care of your employees. We're all a big family, and we work together. About all I want to say. Ms. Anna, glad it's going good out of Chonder. I can't wait to get in that new place out of Chonder. Anyhow, I appreciate being here. Ready to do.
You don't want to.
I just, I'm not ready for July 30th restart. My age just does not like that. But my 11-year-old daughter is excited, ready to go. So, you know, glad to see everybody here. Mr. Anna, great job. I know her Beth is kind of taking a break. It ramps up summertime for you and your crew. And I was sitting here, I'm not hitting on your wife by chance, but I, I looked over and I thought, who is that teenager sitting over here? She got her hair pulled back like this? And it is good to see all of y'all, y'all here. And I just, Mr. Martin, thank you for your voice. If we don't use our. If we don't use our voice, it's no good, so thank you for being here. I love the participation even when they bash us, so, you know, and we do get that sometimes. But I love what I do here, I love this school system, and I'm excited for the next 100 years to expand this 159 acres. So.
That's right.
Let's, let's, let's get the buildings on.
Yes, we're doing that. We're in kid business. I believe our system really is in kid business. It's meeting, bookkeeping, all the other reports. It's, it's a lesson to know that we live in an area that puts kids, puts kids first, and has that as a central theme. Get one of the speakers, it's good to see concerns. I suggest that we could add a lot more if, if the system wasn't like it is. But we've been blessed, because I think we're a special system. Bobby's always said we're the best school system in Georgia, or the United States.
We are.
I have to agree with him. Proud of y'all, and proud of the teachers, those who administrate, those who take care of the kids, everyone, doctor, father, thank you.
I'll say thank you for everybody that showed up tonight, the ones that are watching. Thank you for coming and speaking. I do appreciate them, Mr. Cole, I do appreciate it, sometimes we do get beat up, but that's okay too, I appreciate it over, so. Ms. Wynn, thank you for all the hard work, I know this has been a journey, you've been in it for a little bit, so I do appreciate it, from the very start of it. Mr. Tanner, I'm gonna brag on you tonight, coming from the same place, but what you're doing, I know how summers are for maintenance staff. I'd ask that you would tell each one of them how much I appreciate them, because I know that they are doing probably more than they want to right now, so. But it is, it is noticed, so please tell them that we do notice it, and I do appreciate it. I appreciate you being able to take care of what you are right now, doing both those projects for us and all this other stuff, that's a lot. And you're doing it well, and I appreciate all that you're doing for us, so I do appreciate that. Dr. Gwotny, I appreciate all of you choosing the directors that you have, like you said, they are an incredible bunch of people. They make us look incredible, I mean, they do, they really make our system really shine, and I appreciate all the things and all the work that you do.
We, we, we have an incredible board.
I agree with Mr. Cole, it is an honor and a privilege, I love what we do here, I love getting this board, it's, it's, it's a family, so, and I appreciate it, so.
And Mr. Brandon, you said the same thing?
Same thing, yeah. God would remember him also, that he'd have a speedy recovery. With that, entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you.